Recorded. And we'll do a roll call. So, um, Dave?
Here.
Jessica?
Here.
I don't see June. Lisa B. I see Lisa's here. I don't hear you.
Lisa, you're on mute.
Yeah, messed up when I left how to leave the other one and then. Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Can you see me?
We cannot see. We can hear you.
So it changed. There we go. I know. I'm looking down. I'm sorry.
Lisa B is here. Lisa M?
Yes.
Randy?
Yes.
I don't see Susan. I don't see Tom. And I am here. So that is six. And that is enough. Our next scheduled meeting of the North New York State Regional School Committee will be held at 6:00 PM on Thursday, July 20th. For our agenda this evening, just so I can see a handful of people from the public on. We have a brief executive session that we're going to move over to shortly. And then we will come back to this meeting for the remainder of our open session and open business. As stated on the agenda, so the committee's assuming our motion to enter executive session passes, our committee will move over to executive session and and back when that business is completed. So first up, I will take that motion if someone wants to read. The executive session paragraph.
I move that the school committee meet in the executive session pursuant to MGL Chapter 30A, Section 21A for the following purpose. Purpose two, to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel, or to conduct collective bargaining sessions or contract negotiations with non-union personnel, Assistant Superintendent and Superintendent of Schools.
In a second.
Second.
Thank you, Jessica. All right, this is to enter executive session. David?
Yep.
Jessica?
Yes.
Lisa B?
Yes.
Lisa M?
Yes.
Yes.
And I will, yes, so that is unanimous. So, a school committee will now be entering executive session pursuant to MGL Chapter 30A, Section 21A. For the following purpose, purpose two, to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel, or to conduct collective bargaining sessions or contract negotiations with non-union personnel, Assistant Superintendent and Superintendent of Schools. The committee, as I said before, will reconvene in an open session back on here. So we will be back shortly. Thanks, everybody.
I think it's everybody, Craig.
I think everyone's here. Thank you. All right. So we're back in, in open session. And moving on to our first item under old business is the superintendent evaluation and salary recommendation. So everybody should have the consolidated summative evaluation reports that took everybody's input and kind of consolidated it in. That's special thanks to Dave Carney, who helps consolidate everything. It takes a lot longer than I'd like it to. So I appreciated the help on that. I do want to go over kind of the process and I know a couple of folks have reached out to, to help with the explanation. So we can, we can make this an interactive discussion and conversation, but I do want to make sure that we've got accurate information, especially out to the public. There's a lot of misinformation being circulated online. And just want to go over what the process is. So every year, school committees across the state, as, as required by DESI, follow a very structured process to evaluate the district superintendent. It's a structured process. It's based upon the goals that are set and voted on at the beginning of the school year. Those goals that are, are set out for the year are lined up with very specific performance indicators that are in the evaluation template. And those goals line up to a subset of those focus indicators. So for those that have looked at the evaluation, there's, there's a number of different areas that are grayed out. Those were not areas of focus for this year. But those are standard focus indicators across the state that DESI puts out in the evaluation template. So it's recommended that there are goals that are tied to a couple of those under each section. Obviously, it's too much to do every single one. So you do a subset of those based on where the greatest needs are in, in any particular district. Each committee member individually goes off and completes their evaluation. And that's for members, members that are continuing to serve or have previously served on the committee through that academic year. As folks know, we have elections that occur very late in the school year. And unless members have been on the committee for more than four months, I believe it is, then they wouldn't be eligible because they obviously hadn't worked with the superintendent for enough period of time to, to perform an accurate evaluation. So it's afforded to, by a vote to previous members if, if they were dropping off the committee and had, had served for more than four months and obviously returning members. Each individual evaluation is then submitted to myself as the chair and this year with some help work to take all of the commentary that's in the, in the evaluation and try to consolidate it based on common themes and things like that. If there's anything that's an outlier that really doesn't align with anything anyone else has said, then we'll have conversations on, on if and how to fit that into the overall. But for the most part, comments have been, have been pretty aligned. Or at least gone with each other. Also look at the ratings and do an average. So if, if, if two people rate something as, as an NI and someone else is a P and one person has an E, we'll, we'll average that out and usually average out to proficient in that example. So that's why you just see one rating on the, on the, again, the summative evaluation. A proficient rating or higher on the evaluation and there's overall ratings for each of the focus indicators. A proficient rating or higher is tied to provisions in the, in the current contract for a change in salaries or salary increase. And this year, that is tied to a 2%, which equates to about $4,000. It's again, standard practice. It's in line with comparative salaries across the state with our comparative districts, et cetera. So we looked at that when, when structuring contracts and, and salary schedules and things like that, similar to what we do with other professionals that have employment contracts. So that's where, where we stand on that. I don't know. I know a couple of folks did have some things they may want to say. I don't know if they would like to speak now, or I can continue to rattle on. Lisa, M?
Greg, there is one part that needs to be fixed. It's in the paragraph that talks about the supervising, super, no, the superintendent's advisory committee and the core values committee. It's combined. And I think it's supposed to be two different statements should be separated.
Which, can you give me like a page or a?
It's in step four.
Okay.
I read it earlier.
Yep.
And it needs to be split up.
Can you, where, where is that again? It's? Okay, we, well, is that just a grammatical?
No, no, it, it will make a difference in how it's read.
Okay.
Let me.
I'm trying to find that in the paragraph that I'm missing.
So in step four, it says, Superintendent Morgan has also demonstrated an excellent collaborative ability through the development of a superintendent advisory committee. And then the next sentence talks about the core values committee. It's two different committees he, that were developed.
Okay.
Is that correct, Brad?
Yes, that's correct.
Yeah. So either we need to add some more to that or change the sentence and put a space in there.
Do you have a suggestion on how that should read? And I can, I'll make a change right now.
No, I don't. Sorry. Just pointed it out. It's two different committees.
Um, all right, let me do this real quick. Everybody see this? So you're talking about this sentence right here. Lisa?
Yes, because that one talks about the core values committee. And the one above it is about the superintendents making the superintendent advisory committee. Two different committees.
What if you just said he also? Formed a, what was it called? It was, um?
The Core Values.
Task Force, was it?
Task Force. Thank you. Trying to remember what the full name was.
Yeah.
School committee, which transitioned from Core Values to?
Was that?
And I don't think that that one included parents. Because advisory, there weren't any parents on it.
Yeah, there were.
Were there?
Yeah.
Yes.
It was, it was a fairly large one, at least in the beginning. It tailed off at the end.
Okay, that's probably why I didn't.
Yeah.
Okay. So both committees compare. The advisory committee doesn't have committee members on it. Is that correct?
It does not. It has parents and community members. It's, it's
Okay.
Two, two parents and/or community members from each town.
Okay.
So it's, it's six, plus myself and any other central office person that may need to attend based on the topic.
All right. Does that read better for everybody?
I think so. Because a core values task force was his goal. Correct?
That was originally, yes.
All right. Anything else on the process? And then I'll go through what the ratings are. I don't think we've been reading these verbatim since they're in the packet. And, and then we'll post it. But we'll go through just the ratings, see if there is any questions and then we can move on that. But I don't know if anyone had anything else on the overall process that wanted to be clarified.
And I apologize, Craig. I'm feeling like I have like amnesia here. In your explanation, for some reason, I cannot remember whether you talked about the rubric that's provided by the state to help us, guide us on, as far as what looks like a proficient rating, what looks like an exemplary, what looks like it needs improvement.
Yep, I did not talk about that. I can actually even put that on the screen if you want to give a brief explanation while I look for it.
Yeah. And so the state, which has come up with the evaluation, all the different sections and the different elements in each section, has also created a rubric so that anyone looking at this in the different areas can understand what is, what, what demonstrates the different levels for each one of the elements. So as far as in the structural leadership, 1A is curriculum. So proficient rating is if he monitors and assesses progress across all schools and content areas to ensure that all instructional staff implement effective and rigorous standards-based unit of instruction consisting of well-structured lessons with measurable outcomes. If that of the statements that are on here, if that is what you feel exemplifies what he's done, then it would be proficient rating. Same thing for exemplary, taking a look at that rubric, it kind of helps to keep everybody on a standard of what is proficient and what is exemplary, so that I don't think, you know, oh, he has, you know, a curriculum, that's exemplary. And somebody else is like, well, no, he has to be in the classrooms, doing everything and working with the teachers for it to be exemplary. So this rubric really kind of keeps everybody on the same page when we're giving the evaluations. And then what we evaluate him at the end of the year, and again, I'm probably repeating what you said, was the goals that are set that we agreed to at the beginning of the year determine which of these elements that we evaluate at the end of the year. Because there's so many elements, it's very difficult for the superintendent and for us to actually be looking at every single one. So we set goals and we measure him against those goals in which one of these elements were represented by the goals.
I was, I think this is a great opportunity to brag about what the superintendent district has accomplished this past year.
Uh, yeah. Susan, I was actually going to wait for a little bit. You, you know, but you can go right ahead if you'd like to.
I wasn't going to say anything. I was just.
Yeah, I was, I was actually going to suggest, make, I don't know if, if you want an actual motion or just suggest that the communications subcommittee at the time of the valuation after this is done, I think it'd be a great, great thing for them to put together a list of accomplishments for the year. It will help the community see what we're seeing as far as internal things that get done that are not always apparent to community members and to parents to really kind of take a look at a lot of what our evaluation is based on. Because it really is hard to see some of these things. And I think some of the stuff that the superintendent this year has accomplished were fantastic things I'd like to get out there so that the community knows more than what they read on Facebook or a simple one-time interaction during the year.
Yeah, I think that's an important point, too, with, with the fact that we, each committee member does the evaluation separate before it's consolidated, because no two people are going to have the same experience with anything, whether it's the superintendent or a classroom or it could be anything in, in your day to day. So there, there were certainly differences in the ratings in the individual committee members. There were, there were some that rated higher or lower than, than other people. So it's, it's certainly based on perspective and experience, but keeping in mind what the superintendent is responsible for as kind of the CEO of, of the district. That's not a in-the-weeds, day-to-day operational role in the classroom. It's, it's a high-level administrative strategic type role. So I, I think that obviously a lot of people don't see it that way, because the first person they'll reach out to is the superintendent, not necessarily follow the chain of command and go classroom teacher, principal, et cetera. So we're going to need to.
Hundreds of employees and thousands of students.
Yeah, yeah. It's, and then again, largest employer, I believe, in Pepel and Ashby, if I'm not mistaken. So you take that as a, it's, it's critical role to the success and the smooth operation of, of the district. And a lot of great things have happened. That's not to say we're perfect. It's not to say there aren't issues. It's not to say that people choose to educate their children elsewhere, because it's not a fit for whatever reason. But there's still a lot of good things that, that go on. And I, I think we need to do a better job showcasing a lot of that stuff. All right. Susan or Rand, did you want to, is there anything specific you wanted to highlight? Or do you want me to just go through the ratings?
I have nothing in particular at the moment.
I don't, I think it'll be better in writing from a communications subcommittee. It'll just put everybody to sleep if we start reading it.
Oh, yeah, no, I agree. I mean, everybody on the committee and it was in the posting. So everybody has access to this if they want to read it. So for the professional practice goals, student learning goals and district improvement goals, again, taking everybody's ratings into consideration, those were all met. We go down to the performance standards. There are four. So there's instructional leadership, management and operations, family and community engagement and professional culture. And again, averaging those together, we get a proficient rating for each of those. And that brings the overall rating to, to a proficient. In each of the superintendent's performance goals, of which there were three, so there was a district improvement goal about establishing a set of core values, that's what we were just talking about earlier. That was met, again, recognizing that as that group embarked on their work, that there was a bit of a pivot which, which again, had been communicated. So that, that was a met district improvement and student learning goal focused around the equity work and continuing down the multi-year plan that had been outlined a couple of years ago. That was also a met. And district improvement, establishing a budget to address the post-pandemic issues was also, was also met. Just again, for clarification to the committee and the public, I mean, these, these are the ratings, there are narratives behind these, behind the individual focus areas down below. So that's again, not to say that there's no room for improvement. There, there's some comments in here around, I think, areas that people had highlighted where there's opportunity. And then there's again, areas that, that were excelled at and are celebrated. So both of those will be found down in the, in the narrative section. But the ratings for each of those subsections were all came out to proficient. Right. Any questions or additional comments from committee members? All right. If not, I will take a motion to approve the superintendent's 2023, sorry, 2022, 23 evaluation as presented. Oh, and we should talk about and include the contractual salary increase that is tied to the proficient rating. I don't know if anybody has questions on that before we make that motion. All right. I'll just comment again on just misinformation that is, that is being posted out on social media. We, we did get a handful of emails, I think maybe about nine or 10. And I think just a lot of confusion, again, based on misinformation. This is a contractual obligation. It is tied to the performance evaluation that we, we just reviewed. It's 2%, which is approximately $4,000. To so I, I won't address some of the specific comments here, because they are, I, I think some are inappropriate. Some made good points that we were working to respond to everybody, but it's, it's based on the, the performance in this, in this evaluation. And, and I think well deserved. So again, Brad, I appreciate all that, that you've done. I know not easy. I know it's not been an easy year and certainly not an easy few years. But I know that you and your team continue to do a good job with the resources that you've provided and definitely appreciate that.
Thank you. And obviously tremendously appreciate the school committee's support. And just to be clear, I, I try to, try to mention it in my self-assessment as often as I possibly can. This is a team effort. There's really nothing that I do, I do alone. I've got a fantastic team of administrators, a great staff in the district and very appreciative of that. So again, thanks, thank you to the committee for your support as always.
All right. There's no other comments, then I'll take the motion.
So moved.
All right, Lisa, Susan, any other questions or comments?
No, just, um, thank you, Brad and team. As you mentioned.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
All right. David?
Yes?
Jessica?
Yes.
Uh, Lisa B?
Yeah, voting to a join, right?
No, voting on the Lisa, Lisa M?
Yes.
Randy?
Yes.
Susan?
Yes.
That is unanimous. Thank you. Next, under new business, I think both Lisa B and Randy, and I think that might have been it, had reached out after, I think it was an MASC session. So I'll turn it over to both of you, because I think, and I, and I apologize if I don't, I may not have replied to both of you in the text or email that you sent me, but I think it's a good starting that conversation on school committee development and how we can leverage materials such as that. So, I don't know, Lisa B, if you want to kind of go first.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
I can't, I can't, my whole screen just blinked out. So I can't see or anything.
I'll hear you answer you.
You can't see me?
Yes.
Yeah.
But, all right. So, yes, the, um, it was, um, a learning lunch, the MASC put on. On June 16th. It was by Dorothy Presser. And it was all on setting goals, the legal responsibility. And the learning lunch was recorded. So I did speak to Randy about it afterwards. It was just fantastic. And had a lot of different goals that we should be setting for each of us. The superintendent, along with the administration. And I mean, I'm still learning so much, so I'm all new to this, but like primary responsibility is to continuous improvement and student achievement. Went into why we exist, the mission, the vision, overarching goals, strategic and objectives. And they went into like SMART goals and has all the presentation slides along it as well. So SMART goals would be specific and strategic, measurable, action-oriented, rigorous, realistic and results-focused, timed and tracked. They put in superintendent doing walkthroughs and how this better impacts the district. Continuous improvement. They explained the different strategic actions throughout the year, along with like the budget and the annual report of the superintendent evaluation, which we just went through, which includes goals, policy, budget and monitoring. And the speaker was actually, the special speaker was the Subbury Chair's school committee person and how she I believe got on the committee four years ago. Don't quote me. And it was just kind of like needed a lot of help and different things and for everybody to work together as a team and stuff like that, meeting and monitoring. And she also said that the school committee should do self-evaluations yearly as, as well. And went into how important this is as well. So I don't know if Randy wants to comment. I did take notes, but I think it's kind of important for everyone to for all us as school committee members, maybe go on, watch the recorded session of it. It was just a, an hour or not even. So, but I, you know, I just felt it was really important and a fantastic learning lunch.
Awesome. Thank you, Liz. I appreciate you sharing that. I, I agree. I think that's important. And because I assume that's linked like on the MASC website.
On the MASC site under resources and workshops. Um, you'll be able to find there is a PDF of just the slides that they use through it. And then there's the recording. It's about an hour long for the recording. I, I, I just talked with Lisa after that. It was a fantastic learning lunch video. The Chair of the Sudbury School District really laid out the beginning steps that we've been trying to kind of tipple up to, trying to do. So we, we've kind of done a little bit on self-evaluation and we've at least agreed that we need to be doing it. We, we've agreed that we need to do some goals and we kind of set some, but we really haven't gone down. We've talked about and agreed that we want to get to a place where we're actually looking at more data to make our decisions. But we never seem to get to the place on how to, what data and how do we get that data? And this of, you know, this workshop really kind of started to lay out how we need to get there and the specific steps. And how it's a collaboration with the superintendent. There's actually a lot of collaboration to start. Not that I want to put on work onto the administration, but there is a lot of teaching going on from the administration to the school committee to let us know what assessments are being used, why are they being used? How do we use them? So that the school committee, when we look at them, we're on the same page and can talk about them. So it's going to be a multi-year process to really kind of get fully up to speed because we can't ask for, you know, 10 workshops with the superintendent to explain all this to us. So it's a, a process, choose one or two things each year to have like one, a big workshop or two at most to start getting the information we need and start going down this road to having that, this collaborative. Just relationship with the superintendent and the administration team in order to better the school committee so that we're just on board and we can actually be helpful to each other. So I really encourage everybody, including Brad, if you want to take a look at the, it's an hour long. So if you have the time, I would encourage everybody to take a look through this, listen to it, come back with your ideas for this because it just really, it, it's a great starting point. And this is what I've been looking for for the last couple of years is how do we get started? And this gave me some of those answers.
Awesome. Thank you.
I'm happy to take a look at her also. Thank you both.
We've talked for a while about doing a retreat or a summer retreat, and I know summer is already creeping up on us. Process benefit from something like that. And I guess we'll have to talk about schedules and something. I don't want us to say, well, I'm going to be on vacation this week on, on the air because that's, that's a security issue.
Yeah, we will get something together. Like I said, I think the first step is for everybody to, to take a look at this this workshop. So that we're kind of on the same page of what a good starting point is. And then I will take a look and I'll work with Craig about how do we get started as far as when do we want to do a workshop, what that first workshop should be and how we go forward.
Because you guys sound like that recording or that live session really got you fired up and excited. And I, I love that feeling. I've been there at the MASC conferences in the past. But it seems like if we watch that video and then within a day or two, hello, you guys watched it a couple of weeks ago, I think. It, it, we might come into it with better energy. I, I'm not saying procrastinate watching it, but I'm, I'm saying, let's talk, let's talk soon. So you can ride that energy.
Good point. I, I, I will start working on that soon, but then later.
Excellent. Well, thank you both. Lisa M?
Talking about the conference, it's usually about this time we get the notice. If we apply early, we get a discount. Is that correct? Or has that date already passed?
I think the date is July 15th, Lisa. I, I've registered Brad already.
Oh, yep. That's probably in my mailbox.
My book right here. It's they got, they need a new picture for the front because they use the same one every year. With the girl pointing to the
Know what it is. The glass.
Yeah, I don't, I don't, I think Rob would be right. I don't have the date right here. It's not.
It's usually like this, so the 15th makes sense to me.
Something like that, yeah. But no, I think, I don't think
First weekend.
The early bird discount?
Yeah, I'm talking about the early bird discount.
Yeah, and I think it has to be before July 15th.
Something about the fiscal year is ending and sometimes districts know what they have remaining appealing to them.
I was asking, because was anybody interested in going? And then we can get the registration in. Or is nobody wanting to go to the November meeting?
Lisa wants to go. Lisa B.
It is a good conference to go to.
Yeah, it's fantastic. I, I need to check my schedule again, but I mean, I, I thought it was invaluable. There's a whole bunch of different sessions on a whole bunch of different topics from I mean, you name it, special education, commuting to school versus taking a bus, budgeting, Robert's Rules of Order. It's all over the place. It's fantastic.
Nice thing about doing the meals is it's a great chance to talk to other school committee members from other districts and kind of you know, how are you doing things? What works for you here? We're stuck there or something like that. But just networking with people that are kind of in the same position you are.
I would be interested in going. Does anyone else want to go?
What are the dates again, Lisa?
It'd be the, I think it's like the first weekend in November.
Yeah, it's usually the
Eighth and ninth or something?
So the Oregon Assembly is the eighth, which is a Wednesday. And I think the sessions are the days following that eighth and ninth or something like that.
Saturday morning is usually extremely loaded sessions.
I, I don't think they're going into Saturday this year, if I remember correctly. I think it's just Wednesday, Thursday, Friday.
Do they do a partial Saturday morning?
Yeah, it's not going into Saturday because it's Veterans Day.
Oh. So it's during the week.
Yep.
As if volunteering wasn't hard enough. Yes.
Something you have to do right this second, but or volunteer for right this second. But it's more of an awareness, I would think. But we do need to get organized while we still have the less expensive rates. You know, I guess maybe let Robin and Lisa M know within the next week or so. Does that make sense? If you're interested in attending? I guess if you're not interested too, might as well share that so no one has, no one follows up just to make sure.
Lisa, I can follow up with you in the next week and figure out if you want to attend or not.
Okay, yeah, I'd have to like rearrange. All my, I'll, yeah.
And sometimes if you can only attend one day, some people just attend one day.
Okay.
Then it's just a lot of driving back and forth.
Yeah. Where is this one at?
It's at the Cape.
Because, yeah, a lot of them are. Deli and Assembly is on Wednesday and Saturday's Veterans Day, probably Thursday, Friday are the highlights of I don't have these, I haven't seen it yet. Anyone else received the list of sessions? No, I haven't gotten anything from them yet. When you start to see, oh, I want to go to this, I want to go to that. And that helps you focus in on the days if you want to go one day.
Yeah, usually they have that out. I, I received something. I'm not sure if it had any of the the intended sessions in them yet.
The website would have it too.
All right. Anything else on the development?
Have one more thing. On the next, on the next meeting, could we recognize the people that have retired from the district? Because we've had some significant people retire that worked several years. And I believe that we as a school committee should recognize them.
Yep. I think we usually do that in our July meeting. This was a this was just a special meeting, but yeah, I think.
So I just want to make sure it gets on that next agenda.
I will note that. Thank you.
I'll add it. And I, I, I just actually requested the list from Anne Marie so we can put it on the Facebook page. So I'll add it.
Awesome.
Okay. Also, Craig, I've been meaning to email you. It's kind of been like on my, because I spoke to Randy also when I, we did the, watched the learning lunch. I reached out to Glenn at the MASC about charting the course because a lot of the courses, like through the summer up through September, were down at the Cape and stuff. And so he told me to reach out to Brad to see if we could maybe get other superintendents of other new school committee members in the area and put together our own meeting close by. So Brad contacted Glenn. I have the email, so I was going to send them to you. So maybe I can do that and have that talked about the next meeting because Glenn told Brad that maybe you could set up something that we could meet before a meeting to make it closer and more condensed for me also. But then Randy suggested that if I wanted to go to one down the Cape, that should be, that she would be, she would agree to put in motion, like to pay for one night hotels, like because they all start so early in the morning. So it makes it kind of difficult for traveling down that far. But I, I can put it together in email and send it to you as well, but I just kind of wanted to mention it ahead of time.
I appreciate that. I think that's a, a good idea. And again, fits into just continuing to improve and, and learn new skills and tips and, and best practices.
Yep, that's important.
Absolutely.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, and, and I've even, as we've had this conversation and, and, and it may be worth just even a standing item on the agenda for professional development, just to hear what each of us has been doing, what opportunities exist, highlighting, hey, there's this MASC seminar coming up, or maybe if somebody went to it, give a quick 10 minute overview of what, of what they took away from it. That may be good to help everybody kind of keep that continuous improvement mindset. So I appreciate both of you bringing that up. Thank you.
Craig, sorry, I have one more thing.
No, go ahead.
There was a email sent to Randy and I, and I think Brad and yourself got it as well about meeting with the state auditor.
Yes, I, I have certain invites, yes.
And so that will be July 13th. And that will be discussing like budget mandatory regulations and things that we have to fulfill. And mandates.
Yeah. So this is the audit tour. Representative Scarsdale's office had reached out, I think, to to a couple of folks. And again, just to keep it below a quorum. We'll have a representative from each town, plus plus Lisa, I think you were, you were on that as well. So Lisa M.
I think Suzanne Bump, who was auditor, auditor at some point in the last several years, had a big initiative to look into unfunded state mandates. This sounds like a continuation of that.
And this will pertain to regional school districts. So that's why she's meeting with us.
I'm sure Mars may have some good input on that, but that's just a situation of regional schools.
Yeah. The other thing that I'll, I'll mention just as an informational item is I, I, with, with the upcoming budget season expected to be significantly more difficult than this current one was. I think Brad, you'd received an email from Pepel's Town Administrator based on the results of their town meeting, but I think there's a lot of interest now to pull together budget related discussions almost immediately, like starting this summer to make sure that we're ahead of the game and, and everybody's prepared for what's likely to come. So again, just wanted to put that out there that we'll, we'll, we could be starting those discussions soon. All right. Go to Susan.
I said with air conditioning, I hope.
Hopefully, yes. Anything else people want to see on the next agenda before we take a motion to adjourn? All right.
Motion to adjourn.
All right, Lisa, Randy, Dave?
Yes.
Jessica?
Yes.
Lisa B?
Yes.
Lisa M?
Yes.
Randy?
Yes.
Susan?
Yes.
Now, yes, we're adjourned. Thank you. I very appreciate you.
Thanks, everyone. Have a good night.
Thanks.